Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call to order this Bloomington City Council meeting. It is Monday, July 14th, 2025. Welcome to everyone joining us here in the chambers and welcome to everybody watching online. We will start as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any covering, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome, council. Long night continues, but we're going to get this work done. Thanks to you and to staff for the work that we've got underway here. Our first order of business tonight is to approve our agenda for this evening. Our first item under introductory items, we have nothing. Item three is our consent business. Councilmember Lowman has the consent business, which is 13 items long. Item four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have one resolution and one public hearing. Item 4.1 is a resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025A, and general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025B. 4.2 is our public hearing, and that is a public hearing regarding ordinances amending Chapter 20. That's regarding Center Point Energy and XL Energy franchise fees. Under organizational business, item five, we've got item 5.1, which is an update on the Bloomington Ice Garden construction underway. Item 5.2, we're going to get an update about our sidewalk plowing reduction evaluation plan. And item 5.3, we'll wrap up tonight with our city council policy and issue update. Council, is there anything to add? Any corrections with the consent as with the agenda as stated? Hearing none, I will move approval of tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion in a second by Councilmember Carter to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And now that we have an agenda, council, I'm going to alter from it for just a moment here because we have a member of a Boy Scout troop here in the audience with us tonight, working on a badge, I understand, Declan Monahan. Stand up, why don't you give everybody a wave, Declan? There you go. Thank you for being here tonight. Troop 374. And is that your big brother next to you there? Or is that?
Forty years ago, maybe.
Okay, okay. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for bringing him. Declan, good to have you. Welcome. We'll move on to our agenda, council. We're going to start with item three, our consent business. Councilmember Lowman with the consent agenda. Councilmember Lowman.
I'll make a call for if there are any holds out there. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move items 3.1 through 3.113. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept tonight's consent business, item 3.1 through 3.13. No further council discussion on this one? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and item 4.1, a resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025A, and general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025B. Our CFO, Lori Economy Sholder, is going to bring us this one.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening, Mayor and council. Today was a great day in the market for us.
Always like to hear that.
It is. Priyanka's bringing up the presentation. In your packet, you had information on the Standard and Poor's credit rating. So I'll just jump into that as they're bringing up the presentation. So on the sales tax bonds, S&amp;P rated it at AA, which is very normal for a revenue bond. And it's the same rating that we received for our Bloomington Ice Garden bonds last fall. And so we anticipated the 65 million bonds in the... There we go. So we brought forward the 65 million in the 2025A sales tax bonds this morning. And then we brought forward the 30.8 million in the 2024B bonds this morning. And we had a stable outlook with S&amp;P. And then on this GO sales tax, again, a AAA because the city is a AAA. And we anticipated, again, the 30.8 million AAA on that one, stable outlook. And then on the 2025A, the sales tax bonds, the total amount that is being issued is 63 million five. With that, we are able to, and it's a 20-year term, we had the winning bid is Jeffries LLC. We had seven bidders this morning. The interest cost is a 4.21%. And we were anticipating about 30 basis points higher than that. The debt service is fully reserved, fully funded with this, and the project will receive the 65 million. On the GO 2025B bonds, we went into the market with a 30 million point eight two five before cost of issuance and related debt service. Again, a 20-year term, the sales tax revenue will pay the debt service on this. We had Robert Baird as the women bidder. We actually had 15 bidders. So last fall, we had 11 for the sales tax bonds for BIG. We have four more bidders today, so this is getting out in the market for us really well. 3.92 is the true interest cost. And again, when I looked at the bidders, all 14 of them were within eight basis points. And when you look at the timing of that, all of them submitted their bids within two and a half minutes. So they are ready right at, right before 10 o'clock to just push the button. We're using $8 million of the accumulated sales tax to buy down these bonds, and the project will receive 35 million. So today is the bond sale, and hopefully you'll award these bonds to the two lowest bidders, and then we'll receive the proceeds on August 13th. And then before you are the two motions.
Thank you. And just to clarify here, these are, just so the general public understands, these are related to, excuse me, the Community Health and Wellness Center.
Yes, Mayor, they are. These are to fully fund the bond portion that the council and the residents authorized per our sales tax referendum, the $100 million for this project.
Thank you. Council, any questions of Ms. Economy Sholder this evening? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Just a quick question, and thank you for the constant good work that you do. I'm curious about, you mentioned that we had lots of bidders and that we had them quickly. Is there a, is there a marketing process that the folks that support us do to get this out there, or is it just a matter of them paying attention to us? Like, how does that process work?
So, Mayor and council, we also have Elizabeth Bergman from Baker Tilly here. So I'll have Elizabeth come up, and she can share her information. But Baker Tilly does a lot of work to put our official documents out in the market. And so they, as soon as the credit rating was released, they pushed.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. Baker Tilly takes great efforts to make sure the market is aware of all of our deals, but particularly, of course, the city of Bloomington. We work with a platform called Muni Platform, a very creative name there, a platform called Muni Platform, that has reached to all the investor community, so the folks who might be buying the bonds, ultimately, as well as the banks who are the conduit for purchasing the bonds. So it usually, and I'm sorry, I don't have the statistic in front of me, but I think it's probably about 500 unique emails that will have reviewed the official statement. So that is, you know, people at like Cit Investment Group, which is a Minneapolis investor, that's why I point them out, you know, their credit people, their portfolio managers, will all be looking at the official statement to decide whether or not it's an investment they're interested in, as well as the Bank of Jeffries, who is the conduit for how you get to those investors. So 500 folks, individual emails, some of them, it's, if you look, they've hit it like 800 times, so they've looked more than once, but it's 500 emails. And that's the way that we get that out, as well as working with the investor community who understands our sale calendar, and we publish it in the bond buyer as well. So a lot of efforts undertaken to make sure that the market is aware, and Bloomington's name always gets a lot of attraction. Like I said, like Lori said, 15 bidders today was, I think, a record for the city. So, and it's more than I've seen for a long time.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up question. So thank you for that, that was super helpful. It's not anonymized, right? It sounds like they know that it's the city of Bloomington that's putting these things out. There's not, it's not like a clean room or something where they don't know what's up?
Yeah, absolutely. When we publish an official statement, so that's a document that details the bond offering as well as information about the city of Bloomington. So that will be, like I say, about the bonds, how they pay, what the security is, as well as just fundamentals about the city, the sales tax collections, the staff, the services that you all provide. It's got a lot of detailed information that your staff and the other members of the working group review. So there's a rich amount of information, and when bidders are bidding on these bonds, they know it's Bloomington, and they know a lot of detailed information.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Council, if there are no questions, comments, concerns, I would look for action. We've got a couple of motions on the screen in front of us. I would look for action on item 4.1 this evening. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Might as well just keep talking, if that's all right.
Might as well.
So thank you for all the work that you do. I, you know, for all of people out there who are skeptical about whether or not Bloomington is the place to be, these are the kinds of things that reinforce that there's a lot of good stuff going on. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025A, in the original aggregate principal amount of 63 million 500,000 dollars, fixing their form and specifications, and providing for the execution and delivery thereof, and the security therefore.
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt Resolution Number 2025A, authorizing the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025A. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember DeLisandro.
I will also move to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025B, in the original aggregate principal amount of 28 million 125,000 dollars, fixing their form and specifications, providing for the execution and delivery thereof, and the security therefore.
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2025B. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for the good news, once again, and keep up the good work. It's exciting to see the response that we get as investors here, or from investors here in Bloomington, and it's also exciting to see the next steps going forward in our Community Health and Wellness Center. So, well done, thank you.
Congratulations on a really good sale.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 4.2, which is our only public hearing of the evening. This is regarding ordinances amending Chapter 20, Center Point Energy and XL Energy franchise fees. Ms. Economy Sholder will stay with us. Julie Long, our city engineer, and Bob Simons, our senior civil engineer, will be talking us through this one. Good evening, all, welcome.
Good evening. Could we get the presentation, please? All right, well, good evening, Mayor and council. We'll be working backwards on this list that you see here. I'll start and then kick it over to Julie and then over to Lori to finish it off. But as you know, we're here tonight for the public hearing for our franchise fee update. We come back typically, or lately have been coming back every two years for an update and a franchise fee update, so here we are tonight. A little bit of a timeline on where we've been on this go-around. Back in March, we met with council to give an idea of what we were looking at for the franchise fee update for 20, for this upcoming year, 2026. We opened up a Let's Talk Bloomington page in March and held the public open house in April, came back to council at a study session to gather some more information, give some more information, answer some more questions. We initially intended on going to having a public hearing be in May, but that was postponed to now to give some, get some more, give some more information to the city council before we came back to this public hearing here tonight. Whichever we, whichever way we decide to move forward here tonight, if we were to move forward with the franchise fee increase for 2026, the rates would go into effect on January 1st. Now, a little bit of background on franchise fees and how and when they were implemented. First of all, franchise fees are used by many cities in Minnesota. There's over 100 cities that utilize franchise fees, 61 of those in the seven county metro area, and 24 of those within Hennepin County itself. We, the city council approved the use of franchise fees back in 2015, so that's when it was first established, initially established to take some pressure off the tax levy and help to get a sustainable funding source to fund some of our pavement management program maintenance techniques. So here, see here the little bit of that history, back in December, city council approved the use of franchise fees, and those began, we began collecting those in April of 2016. From 2016 to the present, we've been using those for mill and overlays, seal coats, PMP trail construction and maintenance, rightway trail construction and maintenance. And also, we added in May of 2023, when we did our, one of our updates, we also added some CIP multimodal projects and sidewalk and ADA improvements as well. Initially, we planned on coming back in 2021 with an update, but in the summer of 2020, due to COVID-19, management made the decision to push that off a year. So we came back in July of 2021 for an update, and then since have been coming back every two years, we came back in May of 2023 as well, and now we're here back again in July of 2025. Here is a breakdown of some of our pavement management program maintenance techniques and what, which of those utilize franchise fees and which ones do not. As you can see, street reconstruction does not utilize franchise fees, but street mill and overlay, seal coats, trails, parks, and rightaway construction and maintenance and sidewalks all utilize franchise fees, as well as some other, some other funding sources as well. Since 2016, we've seal quoted about just over 200 miles of segments using franchise fee dollars. We have milled and overlaid just around 75 miles of street segments since 2016. In regards to rightaway trails and park trails, you can see in the blue the rightaway trails and sidewalks that we've completed since 2016. We've completed about nine miles of rightaway trails and about three miles of park trails since 2016, and I'll show in an upcoming slide what we plan for for the future. Now, a little bit more information on our status and condition. In regards to our streets, our 340-plus miles of streets, as you all know, we have a pavement condition index value, a PCI value for all the streets, and you can see here our different ranges. We're doing quite well, the 0 to 36 range, bringing the problem range, we have just around four miles in that range currently, and then we move into the moderate and the adequate ranges from there. I will note, earlier this year, we took a closer look at our PMP program in general, but our mill and overlay program, which utilizes franchise fees, took a look at the funding, took a look at the mileage that's needed in the coming years. We're going to be reducing by one mile as part of the program in 2026, and we took a look, closer look at the franchise fee dollars, and we were able to reallocate $2,000 to $300,000 per year to, to use for other, other items such as sustainability or retaining walls, like we'll be discussing here in a minute. But we took a closer look earlier this year at the, at that program. In regards to our sidewalks, we have just under 250 miles of sidewalks in the city, 75 or so miles of those that we consider to be deficient width under our standard five feet width. When we come through with our PMP overlay reconstruction projects and any of other infrastructure projects, we replace sidewalks that aren't in good condition at that time. Those 250 miles are generally in good shape. As an example, oh, in 2024, we replaced about 10,000 feet of sidewalk with our different infrastructure projects. We installed about 4,400 feet of new sidewalks, and we replaced like 150 to 200 pad ramps, which is typically what we do annually. And then in regards to our asphalt trails, we have just under 50 miles of asphalt trails, 32 miles in rightaway, 15 miles in parks, similar PCI ranges that we would have for asphalt street. We had about 10 miles in the 0 to 36 range when we started utilizing franchise fees back in 2016. Now we have that four and a half miles remaining, and all of that is Normandale Boulevard and Old Shakopee Road, which is on our list in the next couple of years to be completing. PMP life cycle, as you know, we love to show this anytime we bring up PMP, but we implemented trails back in 2016 with a similar idea as we have for roads. We crack, crack and fog seal them typically every five years to extend the life of those pavements. This, this just shows you though, those 75 miles that I mentioned are in deficient width, under five feet in width of our sidewalks, and we replace those as we come through with our PMP projects and other infrastructure projects as well. And also fill sidewalk gaps, since we're utilizing the use, the use of these franchise fee dollars to do that as well with our different projects. In regards to ADA compliance, we have just under 5,000 pedestrian ramps in the city. We completed our inventory back in 2022. Just over half of those were shown to be compliant with the majority of them that weren't with just minor defects, so we replace around 200 of them every year as we come through with our projects. Another item that we do with our pavement management program, when we come through with our scoping meeting every year, we look for areas where we can fill sidewalk gaps or fill trail gaps. One example here in our 2025 project here this summer, we'll be filling in a gap on the north side of Wright's Lake Park, adjacent to 84th Street between Old Cedar and 17th Avenue. Here is that future trail and sidewalks, sidewalks map. This shows our upcoming PMP project items. It shows some CIP multi-agency items, Park Master Plan items, 494, things of that sort. A few of the items that are upcoming in the near future, you can see are circled in blue. We have Normandale Boulevard, trails on both sides that we'll be doing here in 2026, Nicollet Avenue, part of Nicollet Avenue Reconstruction Project with Hennepin County, we'll be doing that here in 2027 and 2028. In regards to parks, we're just, just finishing up Bryant Park, and we did some trails adjacent to Treppaw Park as well, and then Moyer and Central Park are coming up next year with an Imau Corridor project. Just a few examples of the upcoming and future trail and sidewalk work.
So I have the new categories of a couple of different proposals we have for your consideration. The first one is retaining walls. We have over 527 retaining walls in the public right-of-way, and currently those, the replacement and repair of those is funded by the general fund or by carryovers from one year into another budget year. What we're proposing is to supplement those funds with franchise fees. On this map, you can see the blue boxes, they show some of our larger wall projects that are upcoming on 90th, West Bush Lake Road, and then, as Bob mentioned, the Normandale Boulevard project. Retaining walls are harder to judge. Here are some pictures of retaining wall failures. I will highlight that one of the 90th street walls that fell over looked beautiful on the outside, but some of the timber tiebacks had rotted, so it, it's sometimes challenging to figure out what our, the scope of our need is. Transitioning over into sustainability, this is the, a page from the Bloomington Energy Action Plan. We had set aggressive goals in 2018 for a 95% reduction in citywide electricity-generated greenhouse gas emissions and 35% reduction in natural gas emissions by 2035, with ultimate goal of climate neutrality by 2050. It's a phased plan, and one of the next steps after 2020, as you can see from the page in the document, is to establish a financing program for greenhouse gas emission-reducing home improvements. Why would we want to do that, in case you're wondering? There are community benefits of saving energy. One, it provides less pollution and better air quality, as we are all seeing right now for a completely different reason, but it can have a negative impact on the community as a whole. There's also less pressure on the energy grid if everyone's house is properly insulated so that we don't have power outages or need to build new power plants during heat waves or other extreme temperature events. And also, it allows property owners to reinvest the money that they save on their energy bills into the local economy. Bloomington HRA has partnered with the Home Energy Squad Program since 2013 with buydowns, and we've had great participation, and we also have had really positive feedback on the Time of Sale Energy Disclosure Program. But the one, the feedback that we consistently get from the recipients of those reports is, this is great, but now I have a really expensive investment into my home that I need to make, whether it's energy appliances or insulation. So we're looking to help mitigate that. There are variety, there are a variety of different energy upgrades that can be included, and this slide shows some, but staff looked at two that would have a significant impact and meeting our goals of climate, where attic insulation and wall insulation. It'll take about 110 years to properly insulate all of the attics in Bloomington at the current rate, and it'll take over 300 years at the current rate to get all those energy upgrades made. Diving a little deeper into the attic insulation example, there are 11,000 houses in Bloomington that don't meet today's current standards for insulation. Since it's 25 years to our climate neutrality goal in 2050, that means we have about an average need of 440 houses to get attic insulation. The price ranges from 2,500 to $6,000. So using that $6,000 number, we'd need about $2.64 million each year to achieve that goal. Similarly, wall insulation, it significantly lasts its 42,000 homes, but that translates to $1 million of funding needed for each year. We also looked at the various communities in the metro and Minnesota, greater Minnesota. You can see a lot of different communities use the discounted Home Energy Squad visits like Bloomington does, but several others have home improvement loans that can include energy upgrades, and then some have energy or climate grants and cost share and rebate In talking with some of those other communities, Edina shared that for just under $100,000 of public investment, they've seen almost $1 million of private investment. And then St. Louis Park has done a survey of their climate champions, and 77% of the respondents said but for the city program motivated them to complete an energy efficiency project. Should this be a route that we want to go forward? We checked with both the Center for Energy and Environment, who partners with many Minnesota cities to implement these programs. We also checked with the HRA, because as you are aware, they have their own loan program, and they thought this, a proposed loan program would marry well with their existing offerings and that they had capacity to implement it and help us with it, should we, council, move forward. If franchise fees are approved, we would do further community engagement, a racial equity impact assessment, and then come back with the actual structure of the program, including income eligibility, terms of loan or rebate, program administration, and eligible uses. This is, right now is just a concept of an idea to show the need for the franchise fee moving forward to meet those climate action goals. On the horizon, we are also undertaking the Urban Forest Master Plan and the Climate Action Plan. I suspect both of those will have additional funding requests, so even if council didn't want two-part if council didn't want to participate with the insulation program, there are other funds that would probably be spent in the sustainability arena. The last time we spoke with council, you asked us to reach out to our two providers, Excel and CenterPoint Energy, about considering not passing along the franchise fees to the direct customers. I don't think this will be a surprise to you, but they did confirm that they would follow what the PUC allows and a city franchise fee would be passed directly onto customers of the city as a line item on the bill. They did, Excel did remind us that with the Partners in Energy Program, and the city is a member of that, that they are advocating for improvements and reduction of use, but at this time, they were not willing to not pass it along to customers. Public engagement. We had an open house on April 17 in the rehearsal hall. We've also had a franchise fee website. We've done some e-subscribes and some social media as well. One of the questions we asked on public engagement is, if council approved an increase in franchise fees, how should those funds be used? As of July 7, we had 44 responses. As you can see, the additional trails and sidewalk improvements was the top vote getter, but the next two highest votes were retaining wall improvements and financing home energy projects to lower utility bills.
Mayor, Council, it's my turn on the numbers. As we've met with the council several times between March and our last meeting in June, the council wanted to spring forward three options. The first option is adding only retaining walls. And if you look at the first column, currently for residential, we are at $5.95 per month on per utility. We are looking for, if we did $200,000 per year for retaining walls, we would need to add 23 cents per utility bill. So that would bring us up to $6.18. And that's approximately a 4% increase. If we did option two, which was $1 million for sustainability and retaining walls, we would need, again, starting at the $5.95 per month per utility, adding 70 cents per month for the $1 million for sustainability and the 23 cents for retaining walls. So then we would get up to $6.88, which is a 16% when you add all of those together, increase for the residential. And then the third option was no additional changes, and we continue to keep the franchise fees at the current rate that it's at, at $5.95. And we stand before you for any questions you may have on the presentation. You've seen most of this, and I know we have a new audience online tonight, so we just want to make sure we were very thorough in going through everything for you.
Appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. Counsel, any questions on what we just heard as a presentation? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, you mentioned that you were able to, through the process of reviewing the PMP, find 200 to 300K in savings, which I totally appreciate. I appreciate so much the work that you guys have done on that front. I know I've been pushing on it for a while, and so I really appreciate your diligence and everything. Where is that reflected in the numbers that we just saw?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, by keeping it at the 5.95 with no increase, we would not be asking for increase. And so we would just absorb, and whatever's coming in, we would put to the pay-as-we-go programs and then save the rest in the trail programs for what's coming in at the $5.95.
Okay, so let me ask it a different way. If we, if we, are you saying that that 200 to 300K couldn't be put towards the retaining wall, the $200,000 for retaining walls that is evidenced in option one?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, there was a scheduled increase to cover us for the next couple of years with the scheduled increases in justice. With the change in what they need, we can continue on for another year at the 5.95 without raising the rate to cover what we're existing and doing. So we didn't need to increase the rate for one year for the reduction that was provided.
Okay, so I understand. So you're saying that the, that we're proposing raising the rates to add additional capacity to do more work. If we didn't do that, we would be able to hold them steady for another year?
One year, yes.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Lohman.
And just from reading through the package, I just want to be sure I understand the, with the home loan program, the issue that we ran into with that was the income requirements. So if we do this new program, it would allow for more people at different income levels to be able to participate in that, as opposed to where it is today. You can use it for some of these things on the, for attic stuff, but it's just, that would preclude people at a higher income.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, that is correct. It would open up the program to more people.
Other questions, Council? So Mr. Simms, I think you mentioned work on Normandale and Old Shakopee Road to add new sidewalks, trails, whatever it is. Will those be at the five-foot width that we, as ideal?
Yeah, actually, Normandale Boulevard, I'm sure you've been out there. Right now, it's about three feet. Some of it has dwindled so bad. But it'll be a 10-foot multi-use trail on the west side and a six-foot concrete sidewalk on the east side on Normandale. And then on Old Shakopee Road, that project would stretch from, I believe it's Nesbit Avenue, to the west over to Bloomington Ferry Road, and that will be a 10-foot multi-use trail on the north side as well. Because there's existing trail-sidewalk combination up there right now. So yes, it'll meet all of the, our existing standards.
And I'm trying to picture that section in my mind. Are we going through anyone's front yard there, or is that all just the industrial and?
Mayor, is that on, you're talking on Old Shakopee Road?
On Shakopee.
The majority of that is industrial property. And there's apartment, a few apartment complexes that are along there as well. So really not as much for driveway impacts on the Old Shakopee Road stretch.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Not really a question. I think there's like two backyards, but there is a, I think it's east of Nesbit, there is a small townhome complex where there's a parking lot driveway. I think that's east of Nesbit. West of Nesbit is just backyards, is a circle and a couple backyards.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Rivas?
Yeah. I mean, how much have you projected to collect from the increase to make repairs on the retaining walls?
Mayor and Councilmember Rivas, what we're projecting is that if we raise the rates, it would be the $200,000 a year.
$200,000.
For the 23 cents.
And if I may ask, how many retaining walls will be fixed with that amount of funds that are in need of repairs?
Mayor and Councilmember Rivas, in regards to the retaining walls, we have other funding sources that we use as well. For example, if it's on a state aid route like 90th Street that was shown on the map, we use state aid dollars for that as well. So that extra $200,000 will really help to supplement the work that'll be occurring in the next few years. So as an example, the 90th Street wall that we did back in 2023 that fell down, that was about a $250,000 project. The 90th Street wall that we're doing now, this coming year that we just were receiving bids for here in the near future, that's over $1 million for that wall. So that, and then as well as West Bush Lake Road and Normandale Boulevard that are coming up, this $200,000 will really help us to supplement the year-to-year costs for those retaining walls, as well as the state aid dollars that we'd be using for those, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, if there are no additional questions, I'm going to open the public hearing right now. I don't see any hands going up, so I'm going to open the public hearing. So don't go too far. We may have questions for you. I will open the public hearing on item 4.2. This is ordinances amending chapter 20, the CenterPoint Energy and XL Energy Franchise Fees. And if there's anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak, if you wanted to come forward now, and then what I will point out to you, thanks for being here tonight. What I will point out to you, we limit all speakers to five minutes, and we've got the clock on the wall to keep track of you. And as you, as you come forward, if you could just announce your name, please. So we have it for the record. You can sign in when you're done. And what was my other point? Oh, and if you ask questions, we'll answer when we're done with the public hearing, as opposed to try and make it up on the fly here. Okay?
So, I'm Laura Kemer. On these franchise fees, first of all, under state law, they don't have to be a flat rate per meter. They can be based on usage. The other thing is, it's starting to feel like the city is viewing these franchise fees as a money tree. I'm not opposed to road repair. I'm not opposed to repairing retaining walls, but the franchise fee has gone up quite a bit, and it's getting to be quite a huge percentage of people's bills. Before taxes and fees are added to each of, to my electric bill, it's slightly over 20% on average. You know, with heating in Minnesota, it's not quite as high percent. But this is, right now, it's $6 per month times 12 months times two meters, your gas and your electric. That's $144. If you look at how much of your property taxes paid goes to the city of Bloomington, and you look at the median home in Bloomington and how much they pay, it's roughly between $1,100 and $1,500. So we're talking 10% to 15% of Bloomington property taxes are being, or this franchise fee amounts to that 10% to 15%. It's getting to be a huge amount. And if Bloomington needs that amount, then it should be done as a property tax levy. I know you're trying to get around certain rules about roads and that kind of stuff with this franchise fee, but you need to think a little bit harder about raising the property tax levy. I know one council person has said in several meetings that, you know, XL and CenterPoint don't have to pass this on to customers, but what business is going to do business in Minnesota if they're charged $6 a month, or in Bloomington, per customer to do business? You know, how much they can charge is determined by the Utility Commission of Minnesota, and they do a pretty darn good job in general. And they just can't say, you know, we're not going to pass this on, we need to raise our fees. You know, I understand corporations, I understand, you know, maybe they make a little more profit than I'd like, but you can't just keep using this franchise fee as a money tree. It's really a big burden. I think the only reason why there isn't a bigger outcry is because most people don't look at all the line item things on their utility bills, and they don't understand. But now, rather than calling it a franchise fee, they're calling it something like the City of Bloomington fee or something like that. They're making it clear that it gets passed on back to the city. So I think you really need to think about this. All of the proposals have merit, but we also have to think about where the money can be best spent. You know, you have tough decisions to make, but I don't think that, you know, all of the city residents are on board with constantly raising these franchise fees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak? Ms. Ryan, is there anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we do not have anyone online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers to speak. Counsel, no one coming forward and no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Mua to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0 closing the public hearing. So, Counsel, staff has laid out three different options for us, based on the recommendations or the suggestion, the request of the council when we first talked about this six, eight weeks ago, whenever we talked about it last. Looking for discussion on this. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with the resident who came and spoke, especially at this point in time. Nickel and dimes matter, and the fact that we can find savings, I think we have opportunities to find additional savings. This work is important, we have to do it. I think we can find different ways to do it without continuing to increase these franchise fees. We know they're going to go up in the future again, and this is feels like an easy place to go. And so my challenge to our staff is to continue working through how we can find efficiencies in other places to continue to support this work. And I would be supportive of option three.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I look at this, Mayor, you know, I think the last time I know we provided for a, kind of a holiday when we had the COVID, and I don't know when the last time was, and I would look to staff to tell me when the last time it was that we raised this as a question. Can staff tell me, what is it, 2020?
It was when it was implemented in 2015, is that correct?
It was implemented in 2015, which is start of January 1st of 2016. So it's been in place for nine years, and the last time we, the council approved an increase was two years ago.
Two years ago, okay. So we're back on track. But I know there's a couple of years where we didn't raise it at all because of COVID. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, the first rate that we put out there was a five-year estimate. So that stayed out there for, one rate for five years, and then we were scheduled to increase it. We paused a year, and then we've increased it in 2021, 2023, and now we're at 2025.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarity. I just want to be, in my mind, understand kind of where we're at with that. Thank you. I appreciate for that, that kind of that historical piece. So with that being said, you know, I, franchise fees, you know, I'm not, I've never been a real big supporter of that because of what it means for those taxpayers, you know, in terms of the regressiveness of it. I mean, you know, certainly a property tax isn't, you know, it's still regressive. But I do think that, at least the sustainable portion of it, which I'm very supportive of, it really needs to be done in another manner. I just don't think this, I have a really difficult time trying to make that connection, and I think our taxpayers would have a difficult time trying to make that connection between the sustainable piece. And then also on top of that, you know, it looks like in the, in the package, it said we needed about $2.6 million a year to do that, and this is only providing $1 million a year to kind of get that done. This doesn't kind of get that done. So it's a lot of risk, and it really doesn't get the job done. So I just think that if this was supplemental on top of that, we also have other home loans out there. I just think this is just not fully baked yet in terms of why this or how this makes sense, at least in my mind, for this. But I do think that the, you know, if we had to increase it, we look at the, you know, looking at placing the additional amount to help out with those, you know, the barriers and that type of thing, I am more supportive of that. So I'd be okay if we did option three today and did a little more work and tried to get ourselves maybe for next spring. And, because I just don't, I don't know even if one, we're only getting one retaining wall really with $200,000. So I just don't know if that is even the right amount. So maybe this spring, we have a better number for that. But I'm also fine with moving forward with the, with option one, where we'd have some of that retaining wall in there today and giving a little bit of an increase and not letting it go as long. But I think that one retaining wall or no retaining wall, that doesn't seem like enough money really to kind of get the job done. So I could see why we might want to just, you know, do a little more work. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I would echo the idea that I don't see the connection between franchise fees and the sustainability. I think sustainability is important, but I don't see the connection here. I can see the connection between retaining walls, they're in the right of way, that's where all these other projects are. I can see that connection, but I also am mindful that we already have retaining walls in the existing general fund, and if we need more money in there, then I think we should be looking at it in there instead of trying to create different pots of money outside of obviously state aid or any other support we can get from partners on those projects. So I would, I would tend towards option three, but again, I can see at least theoretically the connection to the retaining wall portion. I would point out that the request from staff is a 4% increase. That's over two years, so less than 2% per year. I don't think that part of the request is, you know, it's not a huge amount, but I do think, to Councilmember Mua's point, I mean, every dollar counts today. The other thing I'd just like to say on the sustainability is it, it would bother me because people of low income pay franchise fees, and that would go to support people of hiring. of higher income being able to add energy efficiency to their house. It seems very regressive to do it through a franchise fee as opposed to a property tax or a levy or something like that, which is still regressive but not nearly as much. So, so yeah, I would lean towards three at this point with possible further discussions as we go through the whole budget cycle about our needs on these retaining walls, because it does seem like a very legitimate concern. I just feel better fit within the general fund.
Thank you, councilmember. You know, it's interesting, the two of you questioning, saying, thinking that the retaining walls fit better than sustainability, because I honestly have the exact opposite thought on this. I mean, I've never been a fan of the franchise fees to begin with. Appreciate it when we finally made that nexus, if we, if we put it toward roads and our trails and so on, because the utilities are under the roads, they tear up the roads. And so to be able to refurbish the roads as needed, to put that money back into the roads made sense to me. And from a, just the way I'm making that connection, I don't see the same thing with retaining walls. I do see it in energy usage, though. These are two energy companies. And to be able to, you know, put that extra fee on them to help mitigate the impact of burning natural gas, of producing electricity, seems to make more sense. So I would see that as a nexus even more than the retaining walls. That being said, I'm still not a fan of franchise fees. I just, I never really did like them. I think I voted against them the first couple of times and finally voted for them last time, just because there was that connection to the roads. And, but I guess I would tend to agree. I think we could look for different ways to fund our needs for both the retaining walls and frankly, our sustainability needs as well, which are, are growing by the day. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would just add that I agree with most of what's been set up here. I definitely see the value in the sustainability work. I just, I guess, a big part of me, and I've talked with our city manager about this, is we are making the transition to priority-based budgeting, and I kind of feel like that might impact the way we have conversations up here, and if sustainability is a true priority for us as a city, then I think that we gotta, we have to figure out how we want to fund it if we need to increase investment. And then I would, I would, I would be supportive of putting in the retaining walls into the franchise fee, but I also can count noses. And so I'm not going to like fight for it. I think it's something that we could also put into the, put as part of the general fund and tax levy if, if that is the need. So I am curious, though, about a comment made by the speaker, just about how franchise fees can be based on usage. And I wasn't, I didn't realize that, and I think about the way we have our water program structured, where higher users, you know, people in the higher tier pay a little bit more, and so, you know, maybe that is something that we would want to explore in the future. I think that would maybe help with the regressivity a little bit, but I don't know. Maybe not. So that would be something I'd be interested in learning more about.
Ms. Connie Scholler?
Mayor and councilmember Carter, a number of cities around us are going to a percentage base, so then it is based off of utilization versus a flat rate. So in accounting noses, so should the council not, if council goes to option three where we have no increase, we would probably come back next spring and bring you a percentage basis.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to pick up on one thing you said. I would actually be supportive of removing the franchise fees and putting this all back into the general fund. So if we review this next year, I would like to see that as an option if there's enough noses to do that.
Worth the conversation. Thank you, councilmember.
Mayor and councilmember Nelson, just to put the numbers out there, we're bringing in about $8.2 million a year, and at the current levy rate, that would be a 10% increase to move franchise fees to the tax levy. Just a 10% in one year for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I don't think the Venn diagram of people who pay taxes and people who pay franchise fees is exactly the same, so I think it'd be worth us looking at that. Because I think there are people who pay franchise fees to the city that do not pay property taxes.
That's correct.
And, and, and so putting 8.2 million into the tax rolls sounds a little egregious as well. So I think we should maybe look at how to defide that if we're going to do it, but I'm generally supportive of that. So, to get pedantic about it, right? I'm so frustrated by this whole conversation, because essentially, what I understand is that we've passed, you know, Minnesota statute has passed a statement that said, "We're allowed to charge these utilities for the stuff that they do in the right of way." But we haven't expanded that rule to include all the people who just put a boatload of stuff in our right of way, i.e. our fiber companies and everything like that. We haven't done that, right? And then there's, the PUC has this administrative thing that basically says that these utilities can, I'm going to quote it here, "Under Minnesota law, utilities are allowed to recover costs that are reasonable and necessary to provide service." That's how vague the language under which the PUC is administratively allowing these companies to just essentially pass this stuff through. And it frustrates the heck out of me. If it was up to me, and it's not, there's an administrative challenge waiting to be had here, in my opinion. Because XL Energy should pay, in my opinion, the, a reasonable amount for the work that they're allowed to do without advance notice, without any, like, they're allowed to go in and out of both the front easements and the back easements and the side easements of our house anytime they want to. And we've just added a bunch of people to that rule. But we don't, we're not charging those people, and then we're, we're basically saying, "They have the right to come up with whatever is arbitrarily reasonable and necessary and pass it along to the customer." I, you know, this is not our fault, but it, but we're getting blamed, no, you know, rightfully, right? I mean, I understand the petitioner's comments, right? But there's, there has to be a better way. So if we, if we don't think that our utilities should be paying a reasonable fee for their unmitigated right to come in and out of properties and do what they have to do in these easements, then that should be handled somewhere, because this is silly. We have this conversation all the time, but the real heart of the problem, the real crux of the matter, is that we have a very limited ability to, to extract from these utilities something valuable on behalf of our residents and taxpayers for their unmitigated right to property. And I think that should change. So I'm fine with whatever we decide here, I can count the noses too, but I personally think there's a real opportunity for us to, to lead in changing the way that this stuff works in the state of Minnesota. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember.
If I may?
Councilmember Reboz?
I would just add a couple of words to what Councilmember Delisandro said. I think we should charge them to, for renting our property where they put the lines to give us the service. They are the only business in the country that we pay them to use our land to provide a service. I mean, I can't think of anything or anybody that, that provides a service that they don't have to pay for that. We had to pay them, and in the event that anything breaks, we still had to buy the meters and all that stuff. It just doesn't make any sense. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman?
Oh, Mayor, I'm ready to go ahead and get some action moving here. It sounds like...
Let me make sure we, everybody said, spoken their piece. Councilmember Loman?
Oh, I heard, I heard option three counted. I'm on option one, but I'll, I can move three, because I can see it sits there. So I'll move no increase in 2026 to make no change and direct staff to return in the spring of 2026 to consider future fee changes. If options one or two... Oh, I'm going to have to read that, okay. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua. And just to specify here, this is for no increase in 2026, to make no change and to direct staff to return in the spring of 2026 to consider future fee changes. Clear on that? We have a motion and a second on the table. Any further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And that was for the motion for CenterPoint Energy, a similar motion for Council, Councilmember Loman for XL Energy.
I'll move no increase in 2026 to make no changes and direct staff to return in the spring of 2026 to consider future fee changes.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua to, for the, regarding the XL Energy franchise fees, to make no increase in 2026 and to make no change and direct staff to return in the spring of 2026 to consider future fee changes. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Thanks for the conversation on this, and thank you for coming forward with your comments. It's appreciated.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Delisandro?
If I may, just before we move on, or if you prefer, I can hold this to the business section, but is, is there the opportunity for us to, like, for the 2026 Minnesota legislative priorities list, if we can have a consideration of like taking some action at the state legislature on this topic?
I think that would be perfect for item 5.3, but yes, you can certainly bring that up, and we can make sure that staff understands that we'd like that included.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to item five on our agenda. This is our organizational business. We are going to get an update on the Bloomington Ice Garden. Leah Hughes, our deputy director of Park and Recreation, is here this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city managers, and councilmembers. First, before, as we pull up the slide, I'd just like to acknowledge Deb Williams, who is, who is the project manager for the Ice Garden renovation. Deb is actually here with me tonight to answer any questions you may have as we move through this presentation. I'd also like to take a quick moment to thank her for her leadership and direction on this complicated and multifaceted renovation. So thank you, Deb. I'd also like to thank the Ice Garden staff who have played a huge role in troubleshooting this project with Deb. So thank you to Lenny Schmitz, Ice Garden manager, Billy Lewis, the assistant manager, and Todd Baer, the Ice Garden superintendent. All right. So this presentation will show you the most up-to-date construction images of key areas in the renovation project. Those areas are listed on this slide. One important thing to note is some of the number four photos you're going to see, and that will make sense in a little bit, are actually different than what was put in your packet. This project is moving very quickly, and so I've used some of the most up-to-date images that we got just last week, so there might be some differences in what you saw in your packet with what you see tonight. It's important to note that this project is current, is currently on time and on budget. The total budget, just as a reminder, is $37.2 million, $35 million in local option sales tax, and $2.27 million in a deed grant. The anticipated opening date is fall 2025 with a goal of October 1st.
On time and on budget are my favorite words.
On time and on budget are my favorite words for any project. So, so far, so good. This slide visually highlights some of the areas that I'm going to discuss tonight. So the yellow highlights show just areas that are of interest. The green highlight are some of the ADA improvements that I'll be speaking to tonight as well. And this slide just shows the same thing only for the second floor. So first off, here is, here are some images of the new rink floor and cooling system. So it should be noted that both rinks one and two have been completed, and so they are currently resting, because that's what happens when you pour a whole lot of concrete. So the first image is the, the structure for the outer perimeter pour of rink one. So you can see the framework there. The second image marked number two is the underfloor heating tube, so that will help prevent the permafrost underneath the floor. The third image shows insulation, the cooling tubes, and then the rebar structure that is underneath the cement. And then the fourth image, you can see the team of individuals pouring the concrete for the actual floor.
Do you have any idea how many miles of rebar, tubes, piping that might be?
A whole lot.
A whole lot, good enough.
A lot. I will say, there were probably, I don't know, 40, 40 people on that floor coordinated in a really beautiful dance to get all that cement poured and then processed. It was, it's quite impressive. This graphic is just something that's on the Bloomington Ford website that just kind of articulates those different layers of the floor that I just showed you visually in those photographs. These are images of the progression of the new ammonia ice system plant. The first image is the new addition to the backside of the building. You can see the new floor with all the different cement pedestals for the equipment. Image two shows some of the compressors and holding tanks that have been installed. Three shows a further progression of more of the compressors and piping that has been installed. And then the fourth image is the most recent, where they've put some of the structure that will hold the above head piping once it's installed. This is the rink three progression for the high school locker rooms. There are actually two slides, because this has made quite a bit of progress. So the first image here just shows the ground prep and in-floor plumbing that was placed. The second image shows the preparation for the cement floor to be poured. Third image is that cement floor. And the fourth image is the, the construction of the CMU walls for both the hallway and the locker rooms, which also serve as the underground structure support for the stadia. Here's the next round. So here is an image of the locker room corridor. You can see the steel structure for the roofing, which is the upper concourse. Image two is the formation of the hallway corridor. The third image is the installation of the interior walls that will separate the three locker rooms in addition to the plumbing and HVAC. And then four is the, the stadia under steel and support, and in this image, they're actually starting to build the structure to pour the initial steps of the stadia. Here is some images of that rink three walkable concourse that will go around the perimeter of the whole rink. The first image is obviously where that outer perimeter on rink three is being poured to support the rink floor. It shows where the, the stadia supports will go. The second image is the steel structure in place for the second level stadia that's near the lobby windows, if you can kind of orient yourself that way. The third image is a ground floor view of the flooring on that upper concourse. And then the fourth image is how you can kind of see they're starting to wrap it around the backside where the ice mechanical room will be. Here's the concessions area. So we are completely moving the concessions from the area it is currently to the opposite side of that lobby area. So the first image is the new in-floor piping and cement floor. The second image is the construction of the new burnished block wall. Third shows kind of midway through that construction, and the fourth image is the completion of the concessions wall in addition to the beginnings of the metal studs that will separate the front area from the back. Rink one renovations for restrooms, so the men's and women's restrooms are coming along nicely. The first image shows the in-floor plumbing. The second and third images show the upper piping and mounts for where the stations will be, and then the fourth is the burnished block walls for those renovated restrooms as well. Here's some second level views of the upper soon-to-be temperature-controlled indoor viewing area between rinks one and two. The first image shows the construction of the new mezzanine wall off of rink one. The second image shows the, the rink side view plus the new walkway that is being created that is easier access for athletes to get from the main hallway back to the locker room areas. The third image shows the stadia still in place that needed to be filled to pour the floor for the upper level mezzanine, and the fourth image shows that completed floor. Here are some of the ADA improvements that you'll see throughout the rink. The images on the left and the right showcase some of the permanent rink level viewing areas that are happening on rinks one, two, and then there will also be similar viewing areas on rink three. The middle image shows one of two lift areas, so they're digging the pit for the lift that will go from the first floor to the second floor. And then something that I did not have an image of was we do have a new ADA restroom that will have an adult changing station as well that will be next to the single-user restrooms off of the lobby area. There will be seating both on the first level and the second level for rinks two and three and the, for the first rink as well, which is a huge improvement. New HVAC throughout the building, so we are actually going to have an integrated system in all three rinks that plays nicely with one another. Much larger pipes and a lot more efficiencies to be found there. And then here's an image of those, the new bank... And then here's an image of those, the new bank of restrooms off of the lobby. So, the first image shows, again, that in-ground piping with the new poured floor. Second shows some of the, the above-ground plumbing plus the installation of the new HVAC systems. The third image shows the steel structure for the walls. And the fourth shows how the electrical and insulation are going in in addition to the front hand-washing station is now visible as well. And with that, Deb and I are here to answer any questions you might have. As always, you can visit the Bloomington Ford website. We are putting all these images on the website in addition to doing bi-weekly social media posts that are quite popular right now. And so, it's always a good one-stop shop for the Bloomington Ford projects.
Absolutely, and thank you for the update. And thanks for, I, I would echo the thanks to the, to, to the, the project managers, to the Ice Garden staff, to you, to everybody who's been working on this. This is humming right along, and it's very impressive, the, the progress that's being made, literally on a weekly basis, it seems like there's another huge step forward. So, thank you for that. Thanks for the update and thanks for the pictures too, because nothing shows it better than some cool pictures. Councilmember Carter, question?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the team, thank Deb. I actually got a tour of big a couple of weeks ago and got to see, I think, rink two being poured. And it, it was quite the process. And I just felt like I left just feeling so impressed by not just, like, the making of the ice, the ice rink, but it's just such a complex project with so much going on. And truly, it is a complete overhaul. I mean, I think the only thing that's really going to be the same is like the, the shell of the building. I mean, the windows are being replaced, everything, and so it just was, it was incredibly impressive to go and, and see the work underway. And so, thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that. And huge kudos to staff, to Deb and her leadership. And I also want to thank you for all of the community engagement from the very beginning and then through all the posts that are happening. I know I've been in contact with some of the key community partners, and they have, I know, appreciated the, the collaboration with them as well, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Did, did you write your name in the wet cement?
They wouldn't let me.
Come on.
I mean.
Councilmember Muah and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing this. Thank you, Deb, the Lenny, everyone at the Ice Garden. I can't tell you how excited, literally, everybody I've talked to has been. Hockey players, figure skaters, and not just in Bloomington. I've spoken to people at Manitanka, Lakeville, Eagan. Everyone is talking about this because everyone uses big. And so, this is huge and I'm super excited about it. And I will have not one but two hockey players this year, so I'm very excited personally. I am, I basically live there already, so I'm excited to get back there. I know kids are excited for fall clinics. They're sick of going to Richfield to do their summer clinic, so I can tell you that. I'm also excited about the HVAC. Hopefully, that fixes the smell coming out of the varsity teams locker rooms. They literally will pass out. Been in there many times, so excited for that. One question, kind of digging into the weeds because it was part of my life for such a long time, moving to ammonia. Just want to make sure we have an ammonia-release emergency response plan because ammonia can be dangerous. And not only does it knock you out because of the smell, it literally will knock you to the ground. And so, just want to make sure that plan is in place. Fire department is prepared for it. Ice staff are going to be prepared for that in case something happens. Likely won't, but in case.
Councilmember Muah, thank you for the question. We are working with B32 and Rink Tech on that plan. We also have a software that has been approved by IT that will help with some of those monitoring systems. So, yes, it is incredibly important, the safety for not only staff but users of that facility and just, you know, being mindful of, of what we're using there and, and using it safely and responsibly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love everything about this and I'm super excited for everybody. I did not grow up here, as everybody knows, and I never played hockey in my life, and I'm terrible on skates. So, I'm not your, your audience, but I'm as thrilled. So, I can only imagine how the people who are going to use it every day are feeling right now. I'm curious about the, and maybe this is something we, we'll talk about at a future date, but I, I'm curious, generally speaking, about what it's going to take to maintain this going forward and what the changes to the big imply in terms of the budget for operations. And most specifically, as I think about that concrete floor, like, the, my first thought was, oh, man, what if a pipe breaks under there? Like, that's a big deal. And so, not to mention the fact that concrete is just one of the most environmentally ugly things we could be doing, so I'll just make that note as I always do when I talk about environmental stuff. But, like, I'm just curious. Do we know or can we get kind of an operations or maintenance plan kind of out of this? Not to put more time and burden on all of you who are super busy already, but I, I would like to just understand what we think that hockey stick looks like in terms of, of the, the cost that it might be. No pun intended there, actually totally intended. And, and maybe it's not. Maybe it's, maybe it's actually going to be less maintenance over time for a couple of reasons. One, it's future-proofed a little bit more, more updated equipment and all that kind of stuff. But I, I would love to just have an understanding of that at some point. Doesn't have to be right now, obviously, but unless we know it already.
So, thank you for the question, Councilmember DeLisandro. We are working on standard operating procedures. We have not started a maintenance plan yet, but that is something that we, we are having meetings with just facilities on who will be maintaining what parts of the facility and what staff will be maintaining that. And so, some of those conversations are yet to be had.
And, and I do think, and correct me if I'm wrong, first of all, they've run a hockey rink before. I mean, I've got, I've got confidence in the work that our, our staff can do and, and can be able to do it. I'm also completely confident that equipment installed in 2025 is going to be a lot more efficient than equipment from 1972. And so, I, I think there's going to be significant financial savings, but we might have to wait a while for that. We might have to get through a season before we really get numbers and really have a better handle on that. But to your point, yes, I think we will be able to see it. And, and yes, I do think it is going to be a hockey stick of, of savings because it just makes logical sense that it's, the efficiencies are going to be there with new equipment. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 on our agenda, Council, is an update on the sidewalk plowing reduction evaluation. And we've got a cast of thousands coming forward. Renee Clark, Kevin Etten, Dave Hansen, I see Aunt Catry. We'll just turn it over to whoever wants to jump in and go.
Mayor, members of council, I will get us started. Kevin Etten and Dave Hansen will review the plan, the engagement summaries, and next steps and follow-up from our presentation last May. I'll update you that the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission also reviewed this proposal this past Wednesday and recommended authorization of the plan to city council. Next slide. Since the adoption of the Park Master Plan in 2021, we continue to use the data, community priorities, and the action plan to look at what we do, why we do it, and how we do it. We're finding efficiencies in all areas of service delivery, and the proposed sidewalk plowing reduction is another example. Sidewalk plowing, as it's done now, is more than other communities provide, and it's not resource to be successful. With the proposal, the most important sidewalks will be cleared faster and better, and we will have additional staff resources for park maintenance to focus on forestry and natural resource management, which is a community priority, a priority identified in our Park Master Plan. And as we continue to expand our efforts in natural resources management with the Nine Mile Creek Project coming online, as well as projects like the community-led proposal you saw on your consent agenda tonight. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dave and Kevin to present the proposal.
Evening. So, I'm going to give a brief overview of park maintenance's role over the last few years. Public Works provides the budget and leadership for all snow removal services. The main four are the streets, public buildings, cul-de-sacs, and sidewalks and trails, as demonstrated in the diagram there. And historically, park maintenance staff have been part of Public Works. But as you all remember, in 2023, park maintenance was transferred over to the Parks and Recreation Department with the expectation that staff would continue to assist with snow removal operations. Some of the driving forces for the changes we're presenting are service concerns around the timeliness of the service. We take too long. People would like to see it being more in line with our streets and cul-de-sacs. Inability to clear to the pavement due to limitations with equipment and concerns for injury. We're not able to clear all the way down to the pavement. Damage to private property. Dave has some of those numbers so you guys can kind of get an idea of how much it costs us when we do damage. Then, risk of injury in shift-fatigued operators, which Dave has more data on that later. Then, some of the long-range planning opportunities. We looked to the Bloomington Together Tomorrow core values. Two of the ones that stood out to us were that we believe that the community thrives when its members share responsibility for its well-being and that we will not allow past practices to interfere with the consideration of new ideas. Back in 2018, Parks and Recreation was made its own department with the expectation for increased investment in our parks and recreation experiences. With that came the development of the Park System Master Plan. And then in order to help meet the strategic goals within the master plan, park maintenance was moved to Parks and Recreation. Some of the other things you guys will see out of that would be increased focus on our parks, increased focus on our natural resource management, and increased focus on our forestry. And with that, we have the Urban Forestry Master Plan in development. Some of the ways we developed the proposed plan were some of the feedback received from the community. Some of the key themes from that were clearing the sidewalks in one day, focusing on city-owned properties, focusing on heavier traffic to pedestrian areas and major intersections, ensuring access to essential services, focusing on sidewalks next to the roads, ones like along Nicolette or Old Shakopee where the sidewalks were right there on the road and would be difficult for the average people to clear, no matter their resources. Then sidewalks in difficult or unique areas. Sidewalks that pass between houses, go behind their house, you know, through their backyards, things like that. And then some of the ways we helped develop that within our own city staff, we took input from multiple divisions and departments. And during a meeting with engineering and planning, the comprehensive plans roadway classification map was suggested to help us develop our plan. As you may remember from our last meeting, we did do a survey of other cities to kind of get an idea of where we would be successful, what help, would help us be. A lot of those other cities said that in the 10 to 15-mile range, they felt successful. Any more than that, and they were hoping for a little more resources. So, that helped us develop our own idea of try to get 10 to 15 miles. With that, one of the ways we could do that would be to add resources to our current operation. And in order to do that, we would request seven more machines and at a cost of about $200,000 a piece, that would equate to about $1.4 million. As we looked at that, we did not feel like that was a viable option. So, we decided to try and meet our resources to the operation instead of the, the operation to the resources. So, with that, we decided to look at the roadway classification map and put that as an overlay on top of our sidewalks. And with that, you have the map ahead of, that lays before you. This would have a focus on, this would focus our efforts in areas where we'd have a greater impact for the community. You know, roads like Old Shakopee, 98th and Lyndale, areas where there's a lot of foot traffic and a lot of people that need to get to work and would churn, would turn the local roads and minor collectors, so like your local streets that don't have a lot of people walking on them and don't have a lot of vehicle traffic. And with this, we would be able to align with our other plowing operations, which would hopefully be one-day completion.
Thank you, Kevin. The Phase Two engagement themes, we heard a lot of the similar things in Phase Two than we heard in Phase One. And like Kevin mentioned, since we were here last, we went back to the community with the map and learned some of those unique things, so you saw the updated map. Among the other themes we heard throughout the engagement, both, both phases, was an appreciation for the existing program, excitement about opportunities for efficiencies and improvement. There continue to be concern for older adults and people with disabilities. There was concern over inconsistent cleaning of sidewalks. That would be the responsibility of the property owner. Safety for children in school zones. Curiosity over enforcement. We still plan to lead with an effort of education outreach and assistance for those that need it. And we want to try and minimize neighbors being in a situation to call on neighbors about their sidewalks. And the last bullet up there, some consider the savings modest. I'll elaborate on some of the savings in more depth than we did last time we were here. So, along with saving approximately $60,000 in direct overtime and equipment costs, we just spent roughly $6,000 doing that sod repair that we do every spring. Workers' compensation claims for the period of 2019 to 2023 were $95,000. In the last five years, we've incurred $38,000 worth of payouts for property damage, and we have another $10,000 in reserve till those are settled. At the end of the day, you know, along with the savings, this is going to do, allow us to do a better job plowing sidewalks where it matters more and improve services in parks. Some of the solutions that we came up with based on the engagement was connecting community. A campaign to encourage neighbors, to support neighbors, and the slogan that Tracy came up with on the right, be nice, help your neighbors with snow and ice. Tracy also drafted a, a resource sheet of local nonprofits and organizations that will either price, provide snow removal services or assist with finding resources for people. That list was in your packet. We plan to partner with the school district to provide communication about any changes and encourage clearing of sidewalks from their neighborhoods where kids walk to school. And then develop a very robust educational campaign through our communications department to inform any changes and opportunities for assistance, both for people to receive assistance and opportunities for neighbors to assist their neighbors. We'll use all of our normal resources like door hanging, city publications, social, social media platforms, and then, of course, some in-person event tabling. At the end, this is a, a reallocation of services and a way to improve park standards without an increase in, in staff or budget and focus our plowing efforts on sidewalks where it makes the most difference. We can start by trimming some of the 5,600 trees in our parks, doing a better job of that. Time spent not plowing can be applied to natural areas, enhancing 300 acres that are already restored or working on the over 1,000 left to be restored. We can provide enhanced winter programming support, like rinks or other programs. And then with reduced time in the sidewalk plows, we anticipate that employee injuries will be reduced as well, so. So, recommendations and next steps. We are looking for authorization to proceed with the plan. We do plan to come back, depending on the decision that is made tonight, on August 4th, with a, a code amendment and have a hearing alongside that. And then we will begin that communication plan rollout and development immediately. We have an article planned for the August briefing. We actually have two, one for either way this decision might go, and the September briefing as well, so. We are here for questions and conversation and-
Thank you for the presentation and the update on information. And, and thanks for the extensive community engagement that I know went on, on this. It's, I mean, we have it in our packet, and I've seen you out and about and seen the conversations that you've been having with folks about it, so I appreciate that, I really do. Thank you so much. Council comments on this, questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
This one's hard for me to, to, to manage my opinion on because everything you're saying makes a ton of sense. And, and, you know, what I, what I can't get a sense for is what, what we know the impact to residents will be. What I mean by that is, you know, that map, it's not super easy for me to understand what's on the map, right? When, you know, it's so detailed. The city is big and there's miles and miles and miles of sidewalk. And so, by the time you try to drill into like, what- drill into like, what does it look like in my neighborhood? Like, it can be really confounding, right? So, and I say that knowing that in my particular neighborhood, there's no sidewalks on my street. So like, you know, I realize it's not me. I'm saying it generally. So, like, if I get a call from a resident who says, am I one of the sidewalks that is going to get covered, or am I the one of the sidewalks where I have to do it myself? Like, I can't answer that question for them. And I don't know that if they asked any of us, we could answer that question for them, you know, easily anyway, like you could drill in. But it would take your time and energy and everything. And so what I think one of the biggest problems I'm having with, while conceptually I get it, is being able to really truly understand what the impact is. You know, outside of my own understanding of, okay, there's a school and two blocks on either side of the school and maybe around the corner, and that I can get. So then, then the question becomes, what do we, what do we do when we can't be that specific? And when candidly, if I may be blunt, the numbers, while they're important and the, I don't think it's fair to just assume that, you know, people are affected because we have a number, like, that's not the true story of the impact to the people that are in these crazy machines and, and everything. A workman's comp claim is one portion of a very long story around their recovery, their effect on their family, you know, the whole bit. So I don't know how to compare these two questions, is I guess what I'm getting at. Maybe none of you are struggling with this, and I'd be open to understanding it. But I'm, I'm struggling to like, know how to decide, I guess, right now. Because I would like to see a real significant benefit to the city, and I think you've articulated some, some of those. We also are got from the engagement we got, people still want to be sure that like areas of high concern are maintained and managed. And I don't feel like I could, I can be that specific about that, although I trust that you guys know what you're doing. So I guess I'm struggling. And I don't know if other folks are struggling with this or not, but I, I want to, I want to do the right thing for the city. This is the first time I've ever lived in a city where I didn't have to plow my own sidewalk. Like, I mean, I've lived, you know, Austin has a measure in place, and they don't even have snow, and they still tell you to do your sidewalks. I mean, so like, you know, it's a little, it's a little bit confusing to me why this is a hard pill for the people in Bloomington to swallow. And at the same time, I would want us to be able to help our neighbors by knowing that if I'm a senior resident and my sidewalk is not on the list, that I can get help. And I just feel like that's a really explicit question and a very specific question to each resident. And I don't know how to answer that question for the residents in my area of, of the city. So I, I did not ask, I did not ask a question, nor did I do anything other than say, I'm really confused and I need more help. But that's, that is where I'm at unfortunately on this issue.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Rivas and Councilmember Muah. Councilmember Rivas.
I have more confusion here. No, I just have questions. From what I hear, it's about $100,000 or just under in savings, right? Which is not important. That's not the real purpose of what you're trying to do this for, right? That said, I do have a couple other questions. That was common. I got two questions. One, have you taken into consideration that the environment will be greatly affected by the amount of salt that the public in general will use to maintain their sidewalks? I know the city probably doesn't use any. I've never seen it in the sidewalks. They just use that sweeper that cleans it up, right? When I do the driveway, I put a lot of salt in there. I mean, it's environmentally friendly. I don't know for a fact, but that's what I use. But most people out there don't measure what they put in there. If you walk in places that people do it before the city gets to it, the amount of salt in those places is unbelievable. So have you taken into consideration the effect that will have in the environment? You know, the runoff to the rivers or whatever lakes, right? That's one thing. The other thing is the reputation this city has as a welcoming community. You know, the effect that this will have on people that walk throughout the city, which it's a lot of people. I live in an area that is heavily trafficked, not just by cars, but people walking to their bus stops or whatever. You know, in my case, I think I would probably have somebody clean it up, but it doesn't really get done in a timely manner either. That sidewalk gets used by a lot of the students going to Kennedy. And I, you know, if I go to work, that's not the, I'm not going to get up at three in the morning to, to clean up the sidewalk. I'll probably do it when I come home from work about 4:30 or 3:30 in the afternoon. So you know, see what I'm getting with this? That's what I have a hard time understanding. I mean, the savings to the city is $100,000. Yes, it's a large amount, but it's nothing really compared to what we spend in other So if you can provide an answer to that, I'd be happy to.
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, I'll take the first stab at this. First, you asked about salt usage and environmental impacts. We don't have a way of knowing really, you know, will people use salt when they shovel? We do have our water resources and engineering department that does do campaign and education around salt usage, protect your drain, and those kind of environmental education awareness things. The second question was how fast? One of the purposes of this proposal is because we often hear complaints, we don't do it well enough or fast enough, particularly on those low-volume streets that we don't get there till day three. Higher-volume streets, where they are used for more pedestrians, for more critical accesses to schools, to businesses, are the streets that we'll be able to focus on faster and do a better job.
If I would just add a little bit about the budget. I think we said it, I've gone through this presentation so many times. There's a couple ways to solve this problem. Like Kevin said, we're outliers, that our routes are much bigger than other communities that think they're successful in doing this and do it well and get positive feedback from their community. Our routes are roughly twice the size of those people that feel successful. And so you can solve the problem a couple ways. You could invest in seven new machines and staff to operate them, or look at an option like this to, to downsize the size of the routes. So I just wanted to make that clear. I don't know if that came out in tonight's presentation, or if I'm just reinforcing that from another time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone knows my stance on this. So much so, then anyways. But my point on this is not about clearing the sidewalks or not. We as a city have set ourselves up for the last 60 years to give our residents certain expectations. And it is not surprising that all of a sudden we're trying to change this, and we're getting the response that we get. And so my point of view on this is either we're going to do it or we're not. So if we're going to do it, I want to know how many snow machines is it going to cost? How many operators do we need to hire additionally? And what that levy increase is going to be for the residents? Because if you look at that map, 70% of us are paying to support 30% of the city. Not everyone has a sidewalk. We're already, we're already supporting a smaller portion of our city as it is. But I understand how important it is. And so if we're going to do it, if our residents are telling us they want us to do it, I want them to know how much it costs. And then I want us to do what we have done and put it in writing and say, we are going to clear your sidewalks. There's no more gray on it. You don't have to worry about it. This is what we're going to do as a city because you've asked us and told us this is what you want. But if no one wants to pay the money for it, then we should go back and do what we said we were going to do originally back in 1965 or whatever it was. And residents then have that responsibility as they should have since back then. And then we can live up to this awesome logo and quote that we have, be Bloomington nice. But that's my stance on it. If we're going to do it, I want to see us do it. And do it to the level that I know we do because we do an incredible job clearing snow in Bloomington. But residents need to know how much that costs and how much you as a neighbor who doesn't have a sidewalk is paying so that your other neighbor can do that. Or if we're not going to do it, then let's not do it. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with that sentiment. I do want to know if, if we were to decide to move forward and continue to do the residential snow plowing, and we needed to add operators and equipment, how much, I mean, what would that actually look like? And I mean, I honestly, I don't, I don't feel like we need to do it in a day. I think two to three days is sufficient if the city is responsible for doing it. So if we made that the, the goal, like two to three days, would it still be seven operators? Would it still be an additional seven pieces of equipment? And then, yeah, what would that cost? I think all of the community engagement has been excellent and wonderful. And I read through every single comment because I know that this is a very hot topic right now and wanted to just really understand the perspectives of community members. And overwhelmingly, people want us to continue to do it, right? But I do think we're missing that kind of key piece of information that if, I'm not willing to continue as is. And so if we're going to continue, we need to do it the right way. And we need to hire more people and have more equipment to make sure people can do it safely. And so I think that's kind of the, that's what I would need to see to really ultimately be able to make a decision. And then when we have the public hearing, I would love for people to respond to that. Like, do they, are they like, oh, wait a second, that costs too much money, and I actually don't want to see that? I don't want to continue? Or like, nope, we understand that this is equal to a 2% levy increase, and we're fine with that. Like, we want to keep it going. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. But so you, you guys quoted the strategic priority plan. I got the past practices portion of it. What's the other portion that I'm missing?
That was the core values.
Yeah, the core values of...
The two that we quoted were, we believe that the community thrives when its members share responsibility for its well-being. And then the other was the, we won't allow past practices to interfere with the consideration of new ideas.
And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you're going to hold my butt to the fire with that. It's, you know, just, just so you know. Okay. So I want to just be sure that's where we're starting. So then I'm looking at one of the maps here on 108th Street, and it looks like, you know, to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, you know, in terms of people asking me in my district, hey, where is, you know, where does the plowing happen? So if I'm looking on this thing here, it looks like part of 108th, you know, where the school is, has plowing. But then on the other side of that 108th, where I know kids are going to be walking, they would not be plowed, right? Is that how that would work? So I guess, I guess what I'm really trying, what I'm really trying to get at, we don't need necessarily, or is it the opposite way around? Because I'm looking, if I go to the, go to the east, it looks like there's no plowing. Is red mean plowing or no plowing?
I can answer that one. Councilmember Lohman, I think you're talking about the area around Westwood?
Yep.
Okay. 108th itself would be one of those low-volume residential roads that would be red, and we would step away from plowing that. But we did agree with the school district to plow all the perimeters of their, their properties because they don't have the equipment or the resources to do it. So since it's the same tax base, we're coming by anyway. We agreed to take care of the sidewalks adjacent to the school that may be on these low-volume roads. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, but it says here that, if it looks like there's red on there, that the, am I mistaken here?
Ian, oh, go ahead.
It might be red on the other side of the street.
Yeah, but I mean, imagine kids would come that way, right?
Yes. We, we, we realize that kids will be walking on all sidewalks coming up to the street.
Well, and I mean, and that's sort of part of my, my issue with some of this. It's like, okay, well, now if we do 106th Street, we get that clear. Well, then there's all these streets that are coming into it. Now you're now in the middle of the street. So I guess those are some of my concerns that I have with it, that, you know, where does this, where does it end in front of the, you know, this one side? Because you live on one side of this, you know, of the street, you get plowed with the other side. So those are some of my concerns as we kind of look at this. And then, you know, my other question I had, you know, we've listed a number of those items which we would have as savings by not doing this, but really by reducing it from where we're at today and getting it down to that, how much of a reduction would we really see in comp? I mean, would it be significant? I mean, would it be, I mean, obviously it wouldn't be 95, but I mean, we're talking, you know, 85? I mean, so those are kind of the, and then the sod, we're still doing the program. And so, and I guess the thing that I kind of, I mean, I kind of know the answer to that. So I'm just rhetorically asking the question. And so, I mean, I get it, you know, this is past practices, the staff has brought this forward. And I think the real point is not so much the savings. I think really it is what is the, what do you call it? Would be the focus of staff and what it's to be gained by kind of going down this other pathway. You know, obviously, you know, residents, you know, I mean, you look at the, at the, you know, the 94% not satisfied, I think this is a hard sell as is. But, you know, I, we are an outlier when it looks like, you know, when we look at other cities and that type of thing, you know. And so if we do nothing, and we say that, you know, and we, you know, I care about students getting to their, getting to their classrooms. Well, so you're going to wait two to three days, you know, for that to be plowed? So that really doesn't fit either. So really what we're asking, so as it is today, I mean, I think staff is really bringing forward a good point. We're not meeting our obligation in terms of what we're saying. Does it really make sense to wait three days? I mean, that, that total, you're still, you're creating the same problem. So I think that we're on the right pathway to having this conversation and a discussion. But I, I think that we're going to need to kind of look at this maybe in a different tiered situation. Maybe we don't make any changes at all with, 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 with the overall program today. But we really look to focus on those places where where the schools are and heavily trafficked, and we kind of create that as the tier one. And maybe there's other tiers of service that we provide for the other, other parts of the, to kind of start kind of chunking this off. And then maybe for those folks who want to increase that, you know, I know that, you know, there was an example where Burnsville has you pay for it. Maybe we can start looking at if you want to increase your, you know, your service level, that people start paying in to do that. That's just one thought to kind of, because at some point, you know, as a city, we've got to kind of make the distinction, you know, are we going to be more, you know, you know, like a Minneapolis at St. Paul or Rochester that kind of sticks to our city type of things? Or are we going to be one of those outliers? And this is one of the distinctive services that we provide for our, and I think, I think just leaving it as is is not really, and if we are going to, you know, go down this and get it into one day, I think we were looking at an incredible increase, which I'm not comfortable making that today. So I think we've got to do something. And I think that, you know, maybe the tiered way is the way to go, that we look at, you know, kind of doing softly what you guys are talking about to kind of get, get this, get this ball rolling. And then some of these other streets become, we still do them, but we're not going to, we're not going to meet our obligation. And so I think that's more what I'm seeing here, and that's my suggestion.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I wanted to, two things. I wanted to make a comment on, on Councilmember Muah's statement. The, the truth of the matter is, we are working very hard, if I remember correctly, to make sure that all streets in, in Bloomington have sidewalks. So the, while I agree generally speaking with the rule of like, some are paying for other people when everybody doesn't have a sidewalk, we're actively trying to get that, like, trying to solve for that problem. So I'd hesitate for us to use that as a reason to do or not do something when the fact is that we're actually trying to put sidewalks everywhere, right? So all that having been said, there, there's an, there's an, the arguments that I've seen for, for, for Bloomington continuing to put the sidewalk, to, to, to plow the sidewalks, is that, well, we are requiring that we put them in, in the first place. Well, of course, because we're an urban suburban city, and we should have sidewalks. Like, I, I worry that, that like, this is a circular argument that we, we're just going to have, you know, there are people who don't want sidewalks and people who do want sidewalks, but we as a city council are deciding that we want sidewalks. Like, that the city, not that we personally want sidewalks, but that the city demands sidewalks as a way to make sure that we have multiple, multiple ways for people to get around the city safely, right? All that having been said, I did, I was just doing some research. Most of the sidewalks in Minneapolis were put in place by 1920, 25. It was 1980 until they created and in a citywide enforcement structure for, for residents to play their, to do their sidewalks. So that means for 60 years, they were in the exact same position we were in. And I find that really funny because when I asked the we were in. And I find that really funny, because when I asked the, like, when I looked up the, the kind of reasons behind it, most residents shoveled as a matter of civic habit, neighborly duty, or to avoid liability. And, you know, this goes right back to the comment you're making around, like, be nice, Bloomington. Like, if you have an elderly neighbor, I would hope that you would, you're already plowing their driveway, I'm sure of it, like I do for my neighbors, right? Go out there and plow their sidewalks. So, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what, what are we trying to accomplish, right? Are we, is, is our goal in, in, as a, as a body, to enforce a rule that's on the books? Because I think we oftentimes seem to have things on our books that we just don't bother to enforce. So, you know, like, I could, let's do that or not do that, right? To me, that's the question. And I think that maybe that's where you were at with it, Councilmember Mua, that's like, do or do not, there is no try, right? So fair enough. Is that the question that's before us? Or is it, is it, or do we have our minds made up on that? And it's just a question of like, what do we do about it? Like, do we either require residents, and we deal with the fallout from that, and we figure out whether there are companies we want to enter into business with, like a consortium of snowplowers, that, you know, that, that will help the city? Or is it, you know, or is there, you know, something else we want to do to fund it? Or do we want to, you know, enforce and charge? Because either way, enforcement's going to be a challenge. And we haven't, in either of the conversations I've been a part of, and I know that I missed the last meeting that we had on this topic, and maybe you, you talked about it then, we haven't talked about enforcement. Like, if we do decide to like, let, like, let residents, like, force residents to do this, which they should be doing, how are we, how are we going to make sure that that's happening? And where's the cost associated with that?
Councilmember Rivas.
I, I'm still going to ask you the same question. I, what is the reason that you're trying to do this? To take care of the parks during the winter time? Is that, is that the driving force behind this idea?
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, members of council, there are a few reasons. First, we aren't resourced to do the work well. We talked about the complaints we get every time it snows, the three-day completion time in school zones. They often aren't cleared till that third day. So kids are walking on, you know, particularly those lower volume roads that we don't get to till day three, they're walking on, on, on city-maintained sidewalks already. So it's better service on the higher-volume roads, where people rely on them more, where it's not as safe and feasible for a resident to clear themselves. The second reason is, we are continuing to look at what we do, why we do it, how we do it, for improved efficiencies. As parks and recreation, we're looking at the service that we provide that's better, more than any other community provides. How do we do it better, more efficient, and then have this benefit of added staff resources for parks, for natural resources, for forestry, that's under-resourced today, and for additional park programming? Kevin told us a story, I think, last time, when they got to a, a rink early with a family with shovels that were super happy they showed up to clear the rink. So it's...
If, if I may, if I may, that's exactly where I don't agree with this. We're going to concentrate on keeping a rink in good shape, but we're going to leave the sidewalks to people that probably are not able or capable of cleaning up themselves. Or they might not even be able to afford to pay somebody to clean it. It is a good gesture to say that a good neighbor is going to go help somebody else. In most cases, it doesn't happen anymore. You don't even know who your neighbors are, just two, three houses down the street anymore. It's not like it used to be. So to have that expectation that a neighbor is going to help another neighbor, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And to, to actually provide the, the staff to go clean up a rink and have it, so the kids can have fun, it's just contradicting the whole thing, in my opinion. I just, that's why I can't support this. I really can't. And thank you for your answer, though.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions, sorry. So I'm struggling to understand one thing. So your, your plan is, if we have residents shovel some of the sidewalks with existing resources, we can get the priority areas done within one day. Is that accurate?
Accurate.
Okay. Why can't we just change our workflow and just do those priority areas on day one, and then go do the low-volume ones on day two or three, or frankly, four? I don't care. Can we just change our workflow to address that and not put this burden? Because I think these, what I heard is, these other roads are low pedestrian volume, low traffic volume. So the risks are much lower if those get cleared later. Is there a reason why we can't just change our workflow, use existing resources, and set expectations? Particularly, also, I think I heard that the complaints are somewhat largely related to, my kids walk into school and it's not cleared until three days. So is there a reason why we can't just rethink how we perform?
I'll start, and I'll let Dave add more context. Part of the, the workflow is this timing and syncing with street plows. So they prioritize those high-traffic areas, and then there's replowing that's required as a result of street plowing. That requires our sidewalk plows to come back. The whole process being under-resourced, we've got not enough machines out and not enough drivers to complete in a day or, you know, upwards of three days. So the same seven people are in a sidewalk machine for three days, 12-hour shifts. And that was part of my answer that I'd like to really provide here, too. Besides the better service, more efficient, synchronized with street plowing on the high-volume roads, it's because we're not staffed appropriately, we talked about workman's compensation, we didn't talk about the just additive effects of sitting in these machines for 12 hours straight for 10 years straight. I mean, these are all, you know, part of the, part of the considerations of just why the programs aren't really set up to be successful. So we're recommending a change that provides a successful program, maximizes service with the existing staff resources. We've mentioned an alternative that council has brought up. We have not given that a significant review, other than we know the cost of a sidewalk machine, and how many sidewalk plow machines we need to do the route in one day with that 13 to 15-mile route size. And that's a approximate investment of 1.4 million. We did send out budget numbers that I, I'm not recalling right now of what we budget. I think it's between $200,000 and $300,000 for sidewalk, machine, maintenance, and replacement for our fleet. That's an annual cost that would go up. We haven't calculated what that would be. And we don't know exactly how, we, it's anticipated additional staff would be required, but we don't know what that number is with staff we have versus staff we need. So that analysis hasn't been done. What the request to council is tonight is to authorize the proposed sidewalk plan. The public hearing then would be to do a code amendment to clean up basically how the code is implemented. The 24-hour clearing, I think, would remain the same. It provides other staff to do follow-up on compliance and enforcement, and I know that was brought up tonight. We are intending to make this an education-based effort, not a compliance effort. We've heard, I think it'll, there'll be some challenges in compliance as we make a big change like this, recognizing this is a hard decision and a big change. Out of the gate, there'll be a lot of extra education and information sharing to property owners. Other communities that have a change like this in place for longer see, you know, a pretty small number of complaints. One other thing I wanted just to mention is for Mayor Councilmember Delisandro, how do you know if you have a sidewalk on your property or who's impacted? We have an interactive map on Let's Talk that we, if this is approved, we would share and make more available on our website. But you can zoom in and out or put in your address to see if you're on a, a route or not. So I wanted to share that that resource was available as well.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson.
I appreciate your answer. I'll be honest, I still don't get it. I mean, I think if you're telling me you can clear them in one day with the same resources, why can't we clear them in one day with the same resources? And then just go do the other ones later? So I just, honestly, I'm struggling to understand that. Maybe we need to talk about that more.
I could, Councilmember Nelson, this is such a complex issue, and there's so many messages embedded into it. So when we say one-day completion, we mean getting through the route in one day, and coming back and being able to clean things up. So that's one of the things that we hear from the public, is we don't get there fast enough, and we don't do it good enough, we're not able to go back and clean everything up. So right now, we in fact do strive for three-days completion on most things. But that's only getting through it once. And things get messed up, and we get, we get numerous calls and inquiries about sidewalks that we plowed the first day that are messed up, that we don't have a chance to get back to and clean up. So when we say one-day completion, that means we want to get through the route one day in a reasonable amount of time, like we get through all of the streets and all the cul-de-sacs, and then come back the next day and do any touch-ups or cleanups. So I just, thanks for giving me a chance to clear that up. I, I know where you're coming from, and I hear that. The other thing that is part of our priorities now is, we do prioritize all the walk areas around schools, whether they are high-volume roads or the quietest neighborhood roads. We plow everything where a student might walk. Even though those sidewalks where students use those low-volume sidewalks, they're kind of, they're not consistent. There might be one road, and so kids have to walk down many other side streets to get to a sidewalk. And I tend to think that maybe they don't always do that, they just take the shortest route. So that is part of our first priority run at things, and so we spend some time doing that, before we even get on to the major roads like Old Chalk, Capeport, and Nicklet, so.
Thank you for the additional clarification. My last question here quickly is, do we track the locations of sod damage, injuries, things of that? Is that, and can that information be used to pinpoint safety improvements with the sidewalks themselves? Can it be used to inform the pavement management program with the sidewalk? If we say, these aren't good sidewalks, we're having a ton of problems here, do we use that information to, I mean, could we just improve the sidewalk and, and reduce a lot of those in that way?
I can answer that. Councilmember Nelson, great question. We do do that annually. We survey our sidewalks. Our street maintenance folks have a contract, and they, they adjust all those kicks or replace as needed. But then winter happens, and things move around with frost, and it creates new hazards. But, yeah, we do try and stay in tune with that, for sure. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Lohman.
So I guess my, my, I'll just say this. You know, I, I understand where we're going with this, but I just, this reminds me a lot of when we were looking at redoing our spring cleanup program. I think we're going to have, I hope I'm wrong. I mean, I honestly, I think we have a room full of screaming people, and, and they're going to be really upset about this change. I think we've got to just find a way to be a little more incremental about this, or find a different way of, of going about this. Because I just, I think, I think just kind of turning this off, you know, one, by doing this for so many years, and I know this is a past practice, but I just, I just don't think this is the way to, to kind of go down this route. I just, I, I get where we're, what we're trying to do, and why we're such an outlier and that type of thing, but I just think it's a very unpopular, we've, we've built a very popular program with what we're doing, that some people are very upset and very angry about doing that. So unless I think we find another way to kind of go down this route of getting it done, and kind of piecemeal our way into it, I just, I just fear that, you know, other councils have kind of come to the same thing, where we're just going to turn it off one day. I just don't think that's, I don't think that's feasible or is going to work. So that's just one council member's point of view, but I see where staff's trying to go, and I just don't see it this way in terms of trying to accomplish it.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a clarifying question. So you're asking us to authorize the new City of Bloomington sidewalk plowing plan, then we also have a public hearing on August 4. And so is the, the public hearing is just, is like to change the ordinance language to align with the new Bloomington sidewalk plowing plan?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, yes. It's really to make some changes to allow for implementation of the plan. The 24-hour completion by residents is in there, but it's some additional language to allow the compliance side of it to be implemented.
Okay. But the compliance side is more of education, right? Okay. Yeah. So I guess I don't feel comfortable supporting this tonight, mostly because I do think it is important for us to have sidewalks cleared across the city. And I honestly, I would really like to know what it would cost us to continue to, to plow residential sidewalks, but do it in the right way. And so before I feel like I can support this plan, I want to be able to really weigh that. Like, if it really is going to cost us, if we say our goal is that they'd be cleared in, you know, 72 hours, but we're only doing 13-hour routes, or 12-hour routes, or I can't remember exactly what the...
Miles.
Miles, 12-mile routes. You know, what would that cost be? And I understand the need to have this conversation, and I'm glad we are, because I think ever since I joined council in 2020, this has been simmering. And so it's been a question we've been asking ourselves. Every time the budget comes around, we're like, well, we could, you know, maybe we don't do the residential snow plowing anymore, and we just keep doing it, because it's a hard conversation. And our ordinance does say that we don't do it. So right now, our operations are not in alignment with our ordinance, which is a reason for us to have this conversation, because at minimum, we need to bring them into alignment. But yeah, for me to make the decision, I really, I really want to know what that cost would be if we just continued to do it, but in the right way. And if you're like, hey, it's going to be X dollars a year, and I just think that that's, I mean, maybe I will say, no, you're right, that's way too expensive, we just can't manage that. And I think other residents probably would say the same thing, between, you know, the costs, not just in the staff time, the equipment, but also workers' comp, repairing sod, like, all the things. But I just, I think it'd be easy, it'd be nice if we almost had like a slide that just showed it very clearly, so that we can make the decision. So that's where I'm at. Thank you. Thank you for all your work and all the community engagement. Again, it's a great conversation for us to have, and it's a difficult one. And so just appreciate all the work that has got into this.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, Council, when I, when I started on the council all these years ago now, the two things that just absolutely shocked me were, first of all, that the Perkins at 494 in France serves beer and wine. I had no idea. And that Bloomington shoveled sidewalks for people. I mean, we're in, we're in Minnesota, shovel your own sidewalk. I mean, this is not even a question in my mind about what should be happening. But, and, and even the code says that, even our city code says that. But for how many decades now, the city has been shoveling the sidewalks for residents. And I, I think, based on the feedback we've received, based on the information that we have in front of us here and the conversations that we've had, I guess the best analogy, I was talking to a really smart lawyer friend of mine about a different issue, and she used the phrase, "The juice isn't worth the squeeze." And I think that's the case here. I mean, this is, this is a big change, it's going to affect a lot of people. And frankly, for the, if there was another zero behind that $60,000, perhaps, but the fact that it's less than $100,000, and it, I just don't know that this is really worth the aggravation that we're bringing upon ourselves. I agree completely with the notion of, if we're going to do it, then let's do it correctly. And let's share those costs with the, the community, and this is what it's going to take. And we, we want to protect our, our employees, we want to do it, and we want to do it right, and we want to be able to make sidewalks passable for folks within the day or two, or whatever we put out as our, as our, as our goal. But to, to keep doing it the way it is, I don't think is tenable. To make this change, I don't think is tenable. To make this change, I don't think is tenable. I think, Councilmember Nelson, your comment about are there operational changes that could be made, which I'm sure our folks have been thinking about for years and trying to figure their way through this. But as it stands right now, I just don't, I don't see how we can move forward with this with, given the feedback that we received from our community about this. I just don't see how we can do this. Councilmember Dal Lysandro?
Two comments on your statements there, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. The first one I would say is, I mean, I think I agree with you in that, I, not being from here, but like, like I said, being from places that do this that aren't even like Minnesota, I am very surprised that we have such pushback from the Great White North, I have to be honest, on plowing your own sidewalks. Having said that, most of the people that live here that I think we have heard from, especially our senior population, I think they didn't have sidewalks when they bought the place. So they're like, oh, it's new to me, and you put this on me and you made me pay for curb and gutter with a special assessment and now you're telling me to plow my stuff. And so I have empathy for the situation we've put them into, which is that these are growing pains of a city that they may or may not necessarily endorse. All that having been said, I still think we need sidewalks everywhere in the city. So, you know, we are moving that direction, that's just a part of what we're doing and for all the right reasons. So, so I'm not sure that the number that you are saying is truly accurate, and I think this is why Councilmember Carter's asking for like what the true cost is, because I heard three different numbers tonight that I hadn't even heard the last time. So the 60,000 number is the actual savings number, right? But we have the machines that we would no longer use. We also have the potential for deferred or for reduced workman's compensation claims and time lost by those people who have to take time off. We, you know, there's a lot more to that number, and I think I heard 38,000 somewhere and another 45,000 somewhere else, whatever. So like, I think that number is more like, even if we were documenting it right now, it's probably in the $250,000 range. So I don't want to dismiss that number as not a thing. Not to criticize what you're saying, but maybe that still doesn't rise to the point you're making of juice and squeeze, but it is more, more a significant a number. And so, like, that's why this is hard, right? Because they are real dollars. I mean, 250,000 is like a third of our, a third of a point on our levy or whatever it is, right? It's not nothing. And what you can't quantify in there is the, is the burden on staff. So, meaning just the emotional burden, the labor burden, the, how did you put it? Every season, 12 hours a day for 10 years, like in a box that destroys your spine? I don't know. Like, that's a lot to ask somebody to do. And then to get a bunch of criticism that we don't do it right, which by the way, I'm hoping that if we decide to support this going forward, those will stop, because, you know, you can't have it both ways, right? So I guess what I'm getting at is, I think we should get a, hey, we're going to a fully built-out sidewalk community, what is the cost of maintaining sidewalks on behalf of our residents on a yearly basis? And we should try to get that number plus or minus 10%. And we should put that in front of the folks that are gonna come to public comment and tell us to keep it, because then they'll know how much they're going to be asked to pay for it. That would be my recommendation.
So I just want to clarify here, council, from a process standpoint, what we have in front of us tonight is whether or not we're gonna authorize the new City Bloomington snowplow plan. On August 4th would be a public hearing regarding changing the code. And so it's, we're not approving, we're not having a city, we're not having a public hearing regarding the plan, it would be on whether or not to change the code. And the code, I think either way, I mean, even if we continue the way we're doing it now, we should probably change the code just to be in consistent manner there, to change it and say, you know, to strike out the point that, you know, residents gotta, have to take care of their own sidewalk within 24 hours. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Tonight, we're deciding whether or not we want the plan to move forward. When we get to August 4th, one way or another, we're probably gonna have this public hearing on changing the code, either to eliminate it or to keep it as it is, and probably it makes most sense to eliminate it to, to be consistent with what we're doing. So everybody clear on that? Very quickly, folks, we're pushing nine o'clock here now.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think if we, if we're going to, I don't think we should just eliminate it, though. I think we should put into law what it is that we are committing to, then. If we're gonna, if we're going to, in other words, if we're gonna take it on, i.e. eliminate the thing that says it's your responsibility, then we should define very clearly what is and isn't what we're doing, including potentially putting a moratorium on new sidewalks. So like, this is caveated that like, this is for today, but going forward, it is your responsibility. So there's no comment or question or anything for anybody going forward. I just throw those things out there very quickly to say, like, maybe we can do better than just eliminating it and leaving it very vague.
Thanks for that feedback. Councilmember Loman?
So just want to clear, it says 5.2 here, it says authorize new City of Bloomington sidewalk plowing plan. I thought you said just the code.
Now, the code would be the public hearing on August 4th. This is the plan that we're talking about tonight, where we just had the presentation on.
Be going forward. Okay, so this is, they're asking for approval. Okay, I'm clear on what we're voting on.
Okay, okay. So why don't we, let's get a motion on this and get it on the table and have a vote on this either up or down, and then we can expect that we're gonna have the August 4th public hearing as well. So does somebody want to move the authorization of the new City Bloomington sidewalk plowing plan?
I'll move it to get it out there. All right, so.
So Councilmember Loman with the motion, Councilmember Dal Lysandro with the second to authorize the new City Bloomington sidewalk plowing plan. I think we've all set our piece, but I'll ask it one more time. Any additional counsel comment on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion fails zero to seven. So thank you for your work on this, I appreciate it, we all do, and we appreciate the consideration that went into it. And we, I think this, this conversation may continue in a variety of different ways in the future, but for now, I think we're moving forward as we were. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there a procedural question around what happens on August 4th then? I mean, did we want to direct staff to pull together something that we could then do?
Ms. Manderscheid, can you help us with that?
Mayor members, I was thinking about the same thing. So at this point, staff, my takeaway would be that staff would be preparing a, are preparing an ordinance to remove the language that's currently in the code about clearing your sidewalk within X number of hours, and would come back with a program, or excuse me, an ordinance that reflects the programmatic discussion you had tonight, but certainly would remove the current compliance obligation. What I'm not sure about is, based on some of the feedback that you've provided tonight, do you want to see any other options provided during the, provided in the packet? Because we would need to publish that and get it out there.
Councilmember Carter?
I guess I'm struggling, because I don't, I kind of feel like we didn't really finish the conversation. I, I feel like tonight, we had a choice in front of us to vote on the plan or not, and I just don't think we were ready to vote on the plan. I don't think it's like necessi, you know what I mean? Like, maybe some of us were totally ready and that was like, but I may have been convinced to vote differently if I would have had more information on what it will cost to operate as we are now, only with more resources. So I guess I just wanted to put that out there, like I, it's not that I'm totally opposed to what staff put forward, it's just, yeah, I just don't feel like I had all of the information needed to be able to make a decision to support the plan tonight, which I feel like I'm seeing heads nod. So I don't know if I, I mean, I would almost maybe propose that we just like cancel the public hearing, delay it, and come back with more, like, with more information from staff related to, because I think we all agreed that we can't just continue to do what we're doing, where we have unsafe conditions for staff, right? Like, we need to do something differently. And so it's either like we go with the proposed, staff-proposed plan of discontinuing, or we continue, but we need these additional resources and this is what it's gonna cost.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, I believe that Ms. Sedeen is walking around finding out if August 4th has any significance.
Ms. Sedeen?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, I'd actually like to propose that we stretch this out a bit, so we can do more work and possibly connect this to some of the budget work that we are doing moving forward and bring back to you some other solutions to work through in addition to a final, for now, change to the code.
I think that makes good sense. Very quickly, councilmember.
Just to clarify, I'm assuming that's because we don't have, we don't have, we need to take time to get those numbers available to us. So if we're, if I'm thinking this through, Mr. Mayor, I'm thinking that what we're saying is, we want the, we want the numbers of what an actual snowplowing plan looks like if we do it all in with the plan going forward, with the sidewalks that are coming, et cetera, et cetera, with the, with a variety of SLA options that would give us like good, better, best, right? And then if we say no to that, then, then we leave the code as it is and we actually do the education plan. Am I, okay, very good, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this, council? Staff, are we clear? Very good. Our final item tonight, council, is item 5.3, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. I have two things to report on. At our listening session this evening, we heard from Mr. Mike List. We've heard from Mr. List in the past, and he's talked to us regarding group home licensing issues, especially in his neighborhood, as they abut his property and other properties. And he described it very well, I think, that some of these, these homes, these rental homes, these group homes that aren't monitored or kept up or supervised in the way that they should be, basically they're a detriment to the neighborhood and the people that are being served by these homes. And he had a series of questions about different things, but for the most part, I think it was Mr. List just kind of expressing frustration, because he's been talking about this for a couple of years now, and he just can't get, I think, a consistent or reasonable answer, not from the city, but more from the state and from Hennepin County, who are the ones who are responsible for homes like this. So thank you to Mr. List for being there this evening, and he was our only speaker at the listening session. And the other thing that I would like to bring to your attention, this Thursday, you are cordially invited to celebrate the city-wide Creative Placemaking Plan approval. So the 16th of July, right here at Civic Plaza, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., it's just gonna be a celebration. It's been a long road for our friends in Creative Placemaking, from their specific work that they've done over in the self-loop to now a citywide focus, and they have a Creative Placemaking Plan that has been approved by this council, and they're gonna have a little celebration on Thursday night. So Wednesday, the 16th is what I meant to say, thank you for that. Wednesday, the 16th, nice catch. But you're all invited, and as is anybody else who would like to stop by and thank and congratulate our friends with Creative Placemaking. That is what I have. Ms. Sedeen?
All right, a few things to bring to the public's attention. A lot of thank yous to go around. This past week, a big thank you to our Public Works team, the utility service specialist team, the traffic engineers, utility staff, along with fire and police, and all of our front desk people who have been taking a lot of phone calls, because they were responding to unfortunately, an unmarked gas main hit that took place last Wednesday. So given the age of the pipe, it was necessary to actually shut down the West Bush Lake Road at West 84th Street, and I know having any road shut down right now is miserable, so we appreciate people's cooperation. The staff combined their various areas of expertise to make sure that the public remained safe, and CenterPoint repaired the pipe and worked to open up southbound traffic as soon as possible, since the foreclosure was negatively impacting that evening commute. So the effort was very much appreciated, and it really truly shows the dedication of the staff to our Bloomington community. And we have, we do know the reason why this happened, and the team was working with the entities that were involved there, too. On a positive note, big shout out to the Parks and Rec team for an impressive summer fest last week. More than 16,000 people attended, with an estimated 30,000 people watching the fireworks around the city. And if you were there, it was hot. It was really, really warm that day, so kudos to everyone who was out there. The fireworks weren't the only element of the event that shined. The cross department teamwork of not only Parks and Rec, but public safety with police and fire, they were very warm in their uniforms, as well as Public Works Department and all of the trucks that were put out there, made for a safe, efficient event. The new security and traffic flow measures earned praise from the attendees, with many commenting on quicker and smoother exits, which, that's amazing. Great work, everyone. And then finally, I don't know how many of you got to get your Panda ears this weekend, but at the Mall of America was Panda Fest. And so our environmental health team and our fire prevention staff and police department were at the North Lot of the Mall of America for the Panda Fest. They worked to ensure the health and safety of over almost 90 food vendors. That is a big deal to have to inspect and monitor all of those food vendors. And the event was sold out. It was also hot to be in that space, but it was pretty cool. And one of the biggest outdoor Asian food festivals in the U.S. Panda Fest features experiential activities, tasting and market fairs that showcases vibrant food, art and culture traditions from Asia. And my guess is, it'll be back again next year, because it was pretty neat. So congrats to our team, that was a lot of work.
Thank you, Ms. Sedeen. Council, any questions of Ms. Sedeen on any of those items? All right, council, anything to bring forward? Councilmember Loman?
Just one brief thing. So given the passage of that bill, the great big bill, at the federal level, with the significant changes to the tax policy and social safety net programs and the clean energy initiatives, I'm just wondering how the City of Bloomington is assessing and directing the impacts for residents, and particularly concerning those that are most vulnerable in our population, and, you know, just the other initiatives that are part of that. So I'm just curious what we're doing, what those impacts would be to our budget kind of going forward. I'm not looking for an answer today, but I want to kind of keep that on our radar as we're, as we...
I will send it to Ms. Tolsman for a quick answer today, and we could probably, this could be an in-depth discussion that we have in the near future, once we understand it a little bit more. Ms. Tolsman?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, we're actually meeting with our federal lobbyists primacy. They're actually in town from DC tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. We're gonna have lunch. We met with them last Friday to talk about the impacts. Actually just sent you guys on email, updating you on it. But we'll be discussing all those issues tomorrow with them, tomorrow afternoon.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Dal Lysandro?
Just the early, per your suggestion, I'd love for us to understand what kind of administrative action and/or legislative policy change we can potentially prioritize in our legislative updates in 2026 around these franchise fees. I actually, between, for two reasons. One, because I think that the current process is unfair, and secondly, we have a lot of new people encroaching in our, in our public utility spaces that, that aren't currently being asked to, to support that. And maybe Exelon and CenterPoint would stop passing this along if they felt like other people were also being charged for the right to be in those spaces. So I don't know if that'll work out, but I'd like to give us a shot at it. It apparently has never been done before, as far as I know, and so, you know, I'm all for us leading the charge.
I appreciate that, councilmember, and we will have that discussion as we move into our legislative policies. I would also recommend, I know that the League of Minnesota Cities is just starting their policy adoption process, as is Metro Cities, and so this might be something to bring up to them as well. So maybe join a policy committee there. Council, is there anything else? I will finish up, council saying nice work today. This was a long day for the council. For those of you who don't know, we started meeting right at lunchtime to, and then rolled into our interviews for our city manager position, and it's been a long nine and a half hours so far. So nice work, council. Thank you for putting forth the effort and serving your community in the way that you've done, today and every day. Thank you very much. With that, council, we are done with our business, and I will look for a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember, second by Councilmember Dal Lysandro to adjourn tonight's meeting. No further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Once again, thank you, council. Thank you to staff for your work tonight, greatly appreciated. Thanks to everybody who tuned in and participated in our meeting tonight. Everybody have a great rest of your week.